Steve, I just wanted to give you this because I don't know if you got it. I emailed it to you before.
Just the press release?
Yeah. Okay.
I had some interesting thoughts for this actually.
Yeah, good. Okay, I saw these. Good. All right, well, I think we're probably -- is everybody here? We're all ready? All right. Rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, welcome to the October 20th meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board. We're short tonight, but we have a quorum, so we can proceed. Let's call the roll.
Neil Truman.
Here.
Kim Kaufman.
Here.
Peter Moens.
Here.
David Harden.
Here.
And the first thing we're going to do is we're going to approve the minutes. So, for the minutes from the September 14th workshop meeting, does anyone have any corrections or questions? Nope?
No.
All right, so I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move.
So, Peter, move, and Neil, second. Neil, you want a second?
Second.
And everybody in favor? Aye. Okay, so that's those minutes. We have minutes from the September 15th meeting, which Linda just gave you a revised copy because our original copy was the draft. So, does anybody have any questions? No? Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve these minutes. Neil's in a second.
Second.
Peter, second. All in favor?
Aye.
I say a -- all right. Takes care of that. I'll try and talk louder, I have a cold, so you have to bear with me. I'm a little slow tonight as well. So, are we going to do the public -- do we do the public hearing first, Linda?
You should have been there yet.
Okay. So, I'm going to ask Linda to read the notice of the public hearing.
Okay, Phillips Town Planning Board, public hearing October 20th, 2016. The Phillips Town Planning Board for the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 20th, 2016, starting at 7:30 at the Butterfield Library on Morris Avenue in Cold Spring, New York, to consider the following application. Jared and Carolina De La Valle, the property is located at 117 Round Hill Road, Garrison, New York. The application represents a request for a construction of a single-family residence including a pool, garage, and adjacent pool area on a 6.691 acre lot. The property is in the RC zoning district. The lot is legally pre-exiting, non-conforming. The property abuts and lies within a town ridgeline and hillside protection area and contains significant regulated steep slopes, some of which will be disturbed. Due to disturbances planned in area of greater than 20%, a special permit is also required. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application, plot map, and other related materials have been seen in the office of the planning board at the Phillips Town Town Hall. And it's dated, "Town of Phillips Town, New York, September 29th, September 2016," by Anthony Randi.
So, I guess first I'm going to ask if the board has any comments. Or should I go to you first, Ron? I'm sorry, I'm not usually the chair.
No, as you wish. It's obviously on tonight for a public hearing, so the applicant will make a presentation to the board and the public. The applicant, from our perspective, has a few technical issues to resolve. The board also identified a few things at the sidewalk relative to a roadway maintenance agreement. The board also made some referrals to the local fire department and to the conservation board. I see tonight that the conservation board has responded. I haven't had an opportunity to read them, but there may be issues there. But there's no problem with having the applicant make the presentation for the public hearing.
Okay. So, I guess it's you, then. You have your microphone?
Get your mic.
One Watson from Beatty and Watson. I'm here with Jared De La Valley, your applicant. Most of the technical items that I need to go over, we just read to you in the public hearing notice, it is a 6.9 acre parcel. It's located behind the former Cybertron building, up on the very top of the hill, along a private road system that gets to the most extreme lot. We're dealing with a relatively steep lot, and what you see in light green is actually what's there today in that this property was an approved lot under the old zoning. It is substandard, but it's pre-existing, non-conforming. The former owner had prepared this lot for sale. Most specifically, as members of the board that went to the site visit last Sunday, there is a driveway that goes right in that we're taking advantage of. There's a flattish area at the end of the driveway where the house will be placed. Below the house, there will be a pool, below that, a small yard, and below that, the septic system. Septic system has all the fill is in -- has been put in place some number of years ago. There is an existing permit for a five-bedroom house, which will have to be upgraded to be paired with this particular house. It's a sort of generic house that it's attached to, but the bedroom count does work. The property, as the members of the board that were at the site visit saw, does have a commanding view, but distant view of the river and the mountains, and it's really quite a majestic view. The lot was prepared for sale to take advantage of that and show that off. So, we walk into a situation where there's very little site work to do. Most of the trees are gone. The essential grading is done. I mentioned the driveway coming into the upper part. Again, if you came into about this bend in the driveway, which is about halfway down the driveway, there's a service road that was used to bring the fill into the septic area also exists. So, both of those will be used during construction. Of course, this lower driveway will be -- will remain for maintenance purposes and that sort of stuff after the house is built, but essentially it will be allowed to go sort of to seed so that it doesn't become an offensive thing. The house that's being built is a one-story house over a foundation. The foundation will be lived in so that you drive to the upper portion, park or pull into the garage, walk into the upper portion of the house, go downstairs to the living portion, which will have a walkout towards the river and views towards the river. So, because of the terrain and because of the regulations, it's a very shallow house, not very tall house. It's respectful of the additional requirements because it's in the scenic protection or ridgeline protection district, so we're respectful of that. We've tried to take advantage of the ground and the situation, which requires a special use permit because we are building on some 20% slope. I did have an opportunity to read the memo from the conservation board. Seems to me it was all positive. It was a very good board. I don't -- a second memo came in this afternoon from its consultant, which really didn't just told you about the rules that we've already, I think we've already followed. I don't think it really had any substantive comments. Tonight, I did hand in a copy of the home or the road maintenance agreement that Mr. De La Valley has entered into. So, we have this really wooded site, an open sort of meadow that's descending, and then we'll have an overview of the river. There was some concern about the whether or not this would be on a ridgeline, but as you can see from the topography on this map, the road, the land continues to climb. It's at least 50 more feet of vertical to the north. To give you an idea while you -- before you guys got to that meeting on Sunday, some -- there was a drone flying around taking some pictures, which I wish I'd gotten there early enough to see it, but I didn't. And so, put together, Mr. De La Valley's office put together a picture of what it might be looking up from the pool area, the septic area. These are actual, the actual trees behind the house is imposed in the ground, so you can see that we have the land rising and the trees rising behind the property. We have this lawn walking up, and you get an idea that behind this wall, you can see the lower elevation, the walkout basement will provide the access to the lower part of the property. And the single-story boxes, Mr. De La Valley says, calls it, is, just sits up there, really one-story high. The entrance, you can just sort of see the entrance to the house on the other side, but as people walk in, guests walk in, they'll be treated to that really magnificent view. So, what we tried, what the designers have tried to do is blend themselves into the property as well as they could, do as minimal amount of disturbance to the ground as they could, and I think we recognized that was accomplished, and I think the conservation board's comments, at least Monday nights, and I think in their letter, also recognize that. We had a model, this is a different model from last time, right? There's a little, same model?
Oh, different model from the first time that we met.
Okay, right. But this is, it's a model of what it might look like, and from your perspective, sitting on the board, you're looking from the lower part towards the house. Those toothpicks, or whatever they are, are really the actual location, survey location of the trees that will remain, and there's only a very few that are taken down.
Yeah.
That's my whole story. If you have anything in particular you think you'd like to --
No, my wife and I are really excited about joining the community. I'm an architect.
Do you need a mic?
No, I need. Thank you. I was just saying, my wife and I are really excited to join the community. I'm an architect myself. This is kind of the dream opportunity. We were married here locally, and our family's been part of the community for a while, and my wife's family has. And as Glenn said, we're, you know, trying to use, you know, concrete in the spirit of those old stone walls without duplicating them, and a single, you know, a single-story wood structure. It's an extremely environmentally sustainable house. I think altogether, it's going to have maybe four tons of heating and cooling altogether. There won't be a boiler. It's going to be passive house style building with triple-glazed windows and all those things. My, interestingly enough, my daughters are super excited about sustainability at nine and 10, and they've asked me to try to make the house net zero. I will have to have a connection to the grid, but ultimately, there's a flat solar panel array on the roof as well. It's a little bit of a family learning exercise about how to, you know, address environmental sustainability, which is something that, you know, we take great pride in, in my practice as a developer. We built the second passive house in the United States up in Syracuse, which can be heated with a hair dryer. And we have buildings in New York similarly that are, you know, incredibly high performance. So, this is a continuation of other types of work that we do that are about sensitivity to place and landscape. And, you know, when we showed up at the site, we just fell in love with it and really just wanted to respect the place, and, you know, you can see from the model, you know, a lot of it is just about using the template that was already created for us by the previous owner, and is meant to encourage us to be, you know, out in the site and to let it be. So.
Okay.
Any questions? Happy to try to answer.
Any questions? David?
No.
Neil?
No. I thought the, we had a good site that was able, we were really able to get a sense. The site has already been disturbed enough so that it's not really an issue of any greater disturbance at this point. There's a bench up here, there's a sloping bench there. We went up to the top of where you could look down south to the bridge and through this funnel essentially of trees down, and we could only see one structure. So, it really, it seemed to be a really sensitively thought-out idea. My two cents.
Good.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions either. So, I guess the next thing we do is go to the public. Is there anyone here who is here to speak about this? Can you stand at the microphone and state your name?
Hi, good evening. My name is Steve Plod. I'm the estate manager of 1178 Old Albany Post Road, formerly known as Sunny Acres. I believe we're just below the proposed building site, if I've walked the property correctly. Only real question I have is to Mr. Lewis's point, that funnel, you say, when you look down, would that be our structure, or are we unsure?
I'm sure, but I can answer that. Your Sunny Acres. Between this property and Sunny Acres, the land rises where Sarusus lives.
Okay.
And then it drops back down to Sarusus. So, you've got that whole ridge from, that goes along up to Sarusus's house and stuff that's separating the, that development from this property.
Okay, great. So, then, as far as any impact for us environmentally, should be nonexistent?
You won't see it, not from, you've got that whole ridge that's blocking it, blocking it, and that view goes, that view goes from down sort of over the glass place and the pizza place.
Right.
And it goes out. That's the way the view goes, and that's the way the clearing is oriented. It's oriented to the west of the Sarusus house.
Okay. Okay, then I have no further. Congratulations.
Steve, you are on the, you're on the old Schneiderman property, is that at Sunny Acres? Okay, so you, you should be far enough back because the Schneiderman residence is further back on that property than, this is way.
Way.
Yeah, you're, I mean, yeah, this is pointed the other way.
Okay, is there anybody?
One of the things that excited me about the property is I couldn't really see anybody, and I'm finding principles I can have in place.
Okay. Is there anybody else? No? So, I guess we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
David?
Second.
Second, Neil? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, what's the next step, Ron?
Respectfully request to ask Mr. Gainer to prepare a resolution, hopefully approval for the next consideration to next month's meeting.
I would have said that, but keep going.
We respectfully request that you direct Mr. Gainer to prepare a resolution to bring the matter to a conclusion. Hopefully, it will be a positive recommendation for consideration at next month's meeting. I do want to mention one thing that one of Mr. Gainer had one comment with regard to restricting development on the rest of the property, frankly, I think is a little over the top for a single residential family, so it'll be sidetracked.
I was just thinking to identify the extended disturbance, future disturbances within the tract, that's all.
Well, okay. I mean, we can certainly, we don't anticipate any at this time, but I took that as a restriction you were looking for, but if I'm incorrect, I'm incorrect.
Yep, okay.
Just in reference to that, this is already a smaller lot than, you know, this is already a non-conforming.
And there are restrictions on what can be done. I mean, there are certain things that can be done under a building permit, but not very many because of the ridgeline and because of the disturbance. So, there are, there's regulations that would bring us back here if there was anything substantive that had to be added. I think it's 1,000 square feet is, so, but there might be, there might be occasion when we needed to do something, wanted to do something, and we just didn't want to be in a position not to be able to do it because there was deed, it was deed restricted from it. And that's what I, that's what I interpreted from the comment, but maybe I didn't read it clearly enough.
Right. Okay. Anything else?
No, again, only because of the issue of visibility of the site or from the site. Interested to know if we can reach some accommodation as to limits of disturbance, and that was the point of the comment, not to the issue of creating a deed restriction. So, I think we can work directly with the applicant's representative and resolve it.
Okay. So, so what do I do next? I'm sorry.
You could direct me to prepare for the next meeting, necessary resolutions.
Okay. So, and do I need a motion for that? Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm, I have a terrible cold, and I'm not usually in charge of the procedure, so usually, you know, I'm listening. So, we'd like a motion to direct Ron to prepare the appropriate documents.
I'll still move.
And a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay. All right. And that's it, right? Nothing else? Okay. The next thing to move to is old business Phillips Town Square, Laowska LLC, 3166 Route 9 in Cold Spring. And I see Jamie McNiff is here for the applicant.
Hi, this is Jamie McNiff from Larry Pajee's office, representing the applicant for Phillips Town Square. Last month when we were here, we're discussing the addition of the event space or the second floor of the restaurant, and just indicating that we had the required parking already in place in the plaza, and that's what the building inspector had wanted us to come before you to show that we had that. Just to point out, from the last time we were here, we are showing an egress from the second floor as that was a requirement from the building inspector. It's the same as the other side of the building. It's about 20 feet in and 20 foot of length, and it's within the five-foot curbed area that's landscaped right now.
And is that emergency exit, or is that a regular, something that would be used regularly?
It's an emergency exit. So, that was, that's the only change from the last time we were here. And I think, oh, I'm sorry. The couple of comments that Ron had in his comment letter was to add a note about how many seats were approved by the health department, so that note was added to the plan. And I think that was it. We provided the engineer's calculations for the septic design and the approval letter from the health department.
Ron, do you have any comments?
No, the board had earlier waived a public hearing considering the matter to be relatively minor, and at the board's prior direction, we have prepared a negative seeker declaration and an approving reso for your consideration tonight. That's what the board has in front of you.
Okay. Any comments from the board? So, I guess my one comment is that there's no ADA compliance here with the second floor. It would be, you know, obviously, and then I think that that was when we discussed this project at the very beginning, Pat Sexton, who was on the board then, brought up that, you know, the second floor wouldn't be, you know, was there going to need to be access to the second floor because there was no ADA compliance. So, it's just sort of for the boards, so the board knows that that was what was discussed in the past. This is a pre-existing building, blah, blah, blah. But in future, I think it's something we need to make sure we pay close attention to. You know, I don't, I don't think we can require it now, but it's just something that's important to think about. So, the next step is to?
Seeker resolution, then you'll adopt your approval resolution.
So, make a motion to adopt the seeker resolution. Anybody? Neil? Second?
Second.
David? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. So, seeker and then, sorry, Steve.
amended site plan approval resolution should be right underneath that.
So, I'll take a motion to accept the amended site plan approval.
I'll still move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the last thing? Is that it?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Thanks. So, thank you very much, Jamie. Thanks. Okay.
I'm going to hand you a graph. I sent that to you earlier, didn't I? Yeah, it came to me, huh? Well, that's what you get. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay. So, moving right along, the next item on the agenda is Griffin's Landscape Incorporated, 3032 Route 9 in Cold Spring, and they're coming back to us after seeking the ZBA approval. So, I guess Glenn will speak to us about that.
Yes, we saw this, I think, back in April, that Cayman's, Cayman asked me to send us.
Just get one of those earpieces with the boom.
I've been asking for a wireless mic that I could just put on, but. We saw, you saw this back in April. It came in and I showed you briefly. We had a number of issues with regard to the site plan and asked you simply to send us to the zoning board. Mr. Gobber wrote a letter to the zoning board. We went to the zoning board and we, we did, in the meantime, we've done two things. We did get the variance that we needed for setbacks and, what's the other variance we needed for the area?
Lot coverage.
Lot coverage. That's, we got the lot, light coverage, lot coverage variance. We did not get the area variance for the setbacks, but we adjusted the plan, so there were, there's buildings, this kiln that dries the lumber was behind the building here. We had some serious discussions about the alternatives with the client, and we convinced him that if he put it here inside the setback area behind the building, it would be more hidden from the road, and it would conform. So, we've removed the offending intrusion. The main building, it does pre-exist the zoning, that only had to have a 10-foot setback, so that's a pre-existing, non-conforming. We have storage in the front, we've limited its height, we've called for screening in front of that, we saw screening from, so the view from the south will be minimized. The wood, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the wood carving and the bear, that's not part of the property, that's on the next property. Back here, we have, we have storage, we've fenced this storage and called for a fence that would be capable of containing the floatables. One of the problems with, back here in the floodplain, was that the material would be picked up, carried down the stream, and caused some problems, so we've talked about a fence in there. So, we've changed it. Mr. Gainer's given you a memo, he's commented a couple of things. I don't disagree with any of the comments in that, in that memo, so we're hoping that we'll come away with a site visit scheduled and the direction to make some of the changes that he suggests.
Can you tell me how high the, because you said you made a height change, but I didn't see that.
I do have a limit on it. I'm not sure what it is though. I'll have to get that to you. I just don't remember, but I know we put a limit on it.
And there's a, Steve, there's a town restriction on how high, because we, when we talked about a different wood lot in a different place, that we talked about there being a restriction on how high the piles can be.
I remember that, it was lions when we talked about that, but I don't remember what the height was. I'll check, I'll check on it.
So, any questions from the board? Or I guess Ron will, you want to say something?
Again, the project was before you, originally in 2015, made one appearance, and as Glenn indicates, the And as Glenn indicates, they appeared early this year. The application still is not complete. It's a permitted use by special permit, so you'd have to go through those requirements, will require a public hearing. I'm suggesting that the board may want to initially conduct a site visit, just to review the process and understand environmental issues. But they do have the ZBA variance in hand at this point, so they can move forward with this board. The, the use is deemed to be permitted, it's, it's being seen as a light industry, which is permitted by special permit. So, the next step in your process would be to schedule a site visit if you think one is appropriate. Again, the, the project, I believe, represents a major project. So you don't want to declare it as such at tonight's meeting. The applicant still has to file a long-form EAF. And he also needs to get a statement from the zoning administrative officer that there's no violations on the property, and that would make the application complete.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
You know, I have a question. So that, this got changed so that it could hold more of the wood, right? I mean, more stacks, more than it wa... Not, not than it has right now.
Right, right now, there's, there's wood everywhere.
I know, and the stuff...
Across the property line, it's, it's significant.
Understood. And that stuff is gonna be carted away to be in compliance with the, the change that they got from the zoning people. But, you know, what I'm wonder, all I'm wondering about is, do big stacks of this firewood create any kind of a hazard in terms of, like, fire? Or something like, I mean, should we ask the fire department to take a look at?
We can refer.
You can make referrals to the fire department, that's fine. And then maybe the building department will want to speak to that as well.
Okay.
You could easily make those referrals.
Because even though it's gonna be a lot less, it's gonna be more than it would be, be allowed if they hadn't gotten a variance, correct?
Right. It's, it's not the same concern that you might vision with a compost pile, but it may still be a concern.
Yeah, I don't, I, I have no idea, I'm just wondering.
Well, one of the purposes of, of this, this, this is raw, is raw material here. It's really, it's wet. And the whole point of the...
Selling wet firewood, huh?
Well, that's the, that's the, that's the kiln. And that stuff is taken off as soon as it's made.
But that has, that has to get stacked somewhere as, as well, right?
Yes.
So we've got, we've got wood and we've got fire on the, on the property. All right.
Nate, perhaps when we do the site visit, if the applicant can just show us what exactly is the process, how does this wood go through? And also, along the same line, Glenn, do you know what size trucks they use to get, what's, what size vehicles they use to, to do their, up to their operation?
I don't, I'll, I'll find that out, I don't know.
Here's my, here's my concern, I did my own little site visit on Google today, and you can see the line, I'll pass one of these down, sorry, I didn't bring enough for everybody, but you can see what the, the line adjustment does to the lot. And by looking at the wood, you can, you can see what they're doing. I mean, you can get a sense of how they conduct their business. My concern is that if you, if you do set it up, if you do establish a lot the way you've said, which looks fine, I don't quite see how the trucks can get in and turn around and come out. So...
We can demonstrate that.
Right, I'm just, or at least make, make us, share with us how this is going to... What, what we don't want are eighteen-wheelers backing out into Route 9. We don't want them to have to go nose in and then nose out
Right.
during the course of the visit. And so again, maybe those two things, if they could just sort of show us how they're gonna, how, how are we gonna do this?
Okay.
That's a very good point, because across the street, they are backing out into Route 9 all the time.
You have the same thing across the street. And let's not repeat that.
Quite dangerous, a lot of the time. Okay, anybody else? So, I guess the first order of business is to declare this a major project. So I'll take a motion to do that?
I'll move to do that.
Peter, and a second?
Second.
My second.
Neil? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The second thing would be to make referrals. Is that right, Steve? Or you want to talk, say something first, Steve?
Yeah, just briefly, if I could. You need to take action, to commence the secret process, as far as this, this application goes. There are, I believe, other involved agencies on this. I think you gotta go to DEC.
DEC, what name?
And...
Putnam County Planning?
No, they, they don't count. I thought there was one other one besides, but there's at least one other involved agency. So you have to decide if you want to do a coordinated review or an uncoordinated review. Now, the difference is this, if you do an uncoordinated review, every agency, it may just be the DEC after this, who issues an approval, has to do their own separate secret review. So, it's a little bit of a hassle for the applicant to do it time after time, the ZBA already did one, for example. But because the ZBA already treated it as an uncoordinated action, I think you should probably treat it as an uncoordinated action as well. And if you do that, you don't have to circulate the notice for lead agency, you can just declare yourselves lead agency in an uncoordinated review and move forward. So I would suggest doing that. Now, the applicant is supposed to submit a long-form EAF. I think they submitted a short form EAF already, which would allow you to, to take action under secret, at least in terms of declaring lead agency. But, you know, you have, it needs to be understood that they have to submit that. So what I'd recommend, and, you know, do you have feelings one way or the other as to whether you want a coordinated review or not?
Not, not particularly concerned.
So if, if it's the board's pleasure, then I think you should make a motion to declare yourselves lead agency in an unlisted action for an uncoordinated review. And that'll, that'll take care of, at least for the time being, your secret responsibilities.
Okay. And does that mean that we can still make referrals?
Well, it, it, it does, but when you do your 239M referral, you have to send the county the complete statement of the, the application, which means you're gonna need that long-form EAF. So you can make the referral to county contingent upon the applicant submitting his long-form EAF, so that the whole package goes out to the county. And CAC you can just send it to, although I would expect you'd want to send the long-form EAF to them as well. The fire department isn't gonna care one way or the other, I don't think. You're just gonna want to give them notice to come around and, and check it. So you can do your referrals, just when it comes to county, you're gonna want to make a contingent on getting that long-form EAF.
Okay.
And what are we gonna ask the fire company for? What do we call it?
Just a review of plans, I mean, I don't know.
I'll identify what, what we perceive to be issues. With, the board has raised tonight, I'll put that in your transmit a letter.
Okay. So... First of all, entertain a motion to, that will do, that will be lead agency with an uncoordinated review and an unlisted action. Take a motion to that.
I'll make that motion.
David? Second?
My second.
Neil? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, the second thing would be that contingent on receiving the long-form EAF. We will make a 239M referral to Putnam County. I need a motion for that.
How about the other two? The conservation board?
We're, they're coming up, I'm going in. Yeah. So, Neil makes that motion, I need a second?
My second.
Peter, second, it's all in favor? Aye. Third, I need a motion to refer to the CAC, and I think we should send the, the long form. Is that also called a 239M?
No, 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 that's just a referral.
That's something, that's just a county thing. So, so we'll send a referral to the CAC contingent on getting the long-form EAF. Need a motion for that. Peter, second, Neil. And finally, we'll make a referral to the fire department. Oh, we gotta vote on that, sorry. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And the last piece would be to make a referral to the fire department. I'll take a motion for that.
So moved.
Neil? Second?
Second.
Dave? Peter? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And is that... And we need to schedule a site visit?
Yes.
So, pull out a calendar. Preferably before our next meeting, correct? There are things to tie up, so it's, it's not likely to come back before us at the next meeting, correct? Yeah, because it'll take a while to get this long form and...
Yes, this, this very likely will come back.
At the next meeting?
Right.
They'll be ready at the next meeting?
Should be.
Okay. Cool.
I mean, you can talk about it, you're not gonna be able to do anything.
It's very likely we'll hear from county.
All right.
Okay. So, Sunday's in November. Or, well...
Meeting's on the 17th.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, so that means we have... Linda, maybe I can ask you to, do you have a calendar?
Six to the 13th.
Six to the 13th. Six, six has got a dot on it, is that a holiday or something?
I wish I could change this calendar.
Oh, well, wait. Anybody observed that? Anybody?
I, I can't even tell what I'm looking at here. November, because it's really small, I know. November, oh, you know, your dot is that it's, because it's the end of day, so it's...
Right, that's what I was, I don't think anybody observed, nobody observed that.
Well, so that means that maybe we should make it at 10 instead of 9.
Wait, far back.
Oh, we went the other way?
We should make it at 8:30.
Make it at 8:30?
That's right. We'll be waiting for this one.
Me too.
So does anybody have a conflict for that day? Everybody can come?
11:06.
Yep.
11:06 at?
9:30.
9:30?
30.
Oh, not PM, though. Okay. So that's a site visit for Griffin. Okay. And, so that's it, right? Thank you very much. Move on to the next piece of business, which is the Hudson Highlands Reserve update on the conservation findings. So I guess for that, I'll ask Ron to speak.
The board has a draft of the conservation findings in front of it. My hope for you tonight would be that you just acknowledge receipt, hopefully with the expectation that you'll get through the document in some detail, review the regulation as, as needed, so that you'll be prepared to adopt the findings as is or with, with revisions at your November meeting. I think as everybody can appreciate, the applicant's been at this process for a very long time. It must be coming up on two years since the documents were first prepared. You did accept the document, the, the latest revised conservation analysis at the July 21 meeting. And then the board took some time to understand the, what the contents of the conservation findings would be, had a work session on it. So it's, and then you finally directed your consultants to prepare this draft document for your review. So, obviously, tonight you can just acknowledge it's in your hands, and as I say, hopefully be prepared at the next meeting to formally adopt this. It's a necessary step in the overall process to pursue a conservation subdivision. Upon adoption of this finding statement, the applicant then moves forward with formal preparation, presentation to you of a sketch plan to identify his development concept. And the sketch plan should support all the items or recommendations made in this finding statement in terms of property to be conserved.
Okay. So I'm just gonna ask my usual question, which is that this doesn't talk about the, the piece where the riding stable is located.
Right. Your ordinance is very clear as to what the conservation findings should discuss, and that's what this document does. Doesn't, doesn't discuss in any, in any sense potential uses. Your ordinance, after you get through the conservation findings, does get into a variety of requirements that apply to conservation subdivisions. Your ordinance is very clear as to the variety of amenities or subordinate uses that can occur on the tract. I actually have a separate document that I'm expecting to issue to you to just remind you of the other things you're gonna do after you get through the findings. But it, and it, and it gets into the issue of determining density and a whole host of issues. But the conservation findings as presented to you tonight follows the format that's specified in your code.
Okay. So is there, just for curiosity's sake, is there any kind of timeline that we're, you know, you're, this thing you're gonna issue to us is gonna basically give us, to some extent, a kind of a timeline of what we have to...
There's no specific timeline provided. As I've said, the, the board has been very deliberate, the applicant has as well, in trying to follow the process to the letter. It's taken a long time to get here. I, I believe that your next step, as I say, is to recognize your obligations to adopt the findings, understand that the document in front of you, with any comments or revisions you want to, want to provide, would be suitable for adoption. That's your next step. And as soon as that's done, I suspect very shortly thereafter, the applicant will be making formal presentation of sketch plans to move it in the usual fashion of a subdivision that you processed before.
Okay.
The appropriate step would be, as Ron says, to acknowledge it, but just as he did with the earlier application, to direct the resolution adopting the conservation findings, be prepared for consideration at next month's meeting. That's not to say that you will adopt it at next month's meeting. If you show up and you say, I'd like to see this change, that change, the other change, you can adopt it subject to whatever changes you want, but you'll be in a position to act if, if you deem it appropriate to act.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
So does that mean that we, if we have any comments about that or any questions, that we should hold them till the next meeting?
Well, I, I think that the better practice would be to circulate a memo, a letter, an email, whatever it is you think's appropriate to raise it, so that you're not bringing, springing it on everybody at the next meeting.
Right.
And that would also give Ron and myself and Susan, if appropriate, bring her in an opportunity to, to either have a response ready for you or to contact the applicant and see what they have to say about the concern or the changes.
It's more a question, I think, than, you know, an objection. I just, but I can do it that way. I'll just send an email.
That'd be fine.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Then I'd like to take a, a motion to prepare a resolution for the next meet, the November meeting to formally adopt the conservation findings with the proviso that if there are changes, you know, we won't do that at the next meeting. So I'll need a motion on that. Peter? First? Second?
Second.
David? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. We can, we can ask Steve about that. Because we're not doing that. As far as I understand it. Okay. So, that's all the old business. We're gonna move on to the new business. The new business is Elspen, it's kind of old business too. Elspen LLC, 235 East 87th Street, apartment left, no. Property address 2700 Route 9, Cold Spring. And this is the Magazzino project. So first... So, first, well, so there are a couple of things, like Glenn, obviously, is going to present his, the changes to the site plan that we're here to talk about. I'd also like to, we received an email from Mr. Spanu about this building, in which he asked to clarify what he says is misinformation about what the purpose of the building is, the use of the building. And, you know, we've been talking about this building all along as a warehouse space, but there were a number of articles, and there's a press release that Mr. Spanu sent us, which indicates that this is going to be used also as a, as a private museum, essentially. So, we'd kind of like to talk about that a little bit in terms of getting some clarification, because it was our understanding, as far as I'm concerned, that the building was not intended to have large groups of people, and consequently, whatever fire suppression and exits and stuff like that were going to happen, this sort of puts it in a new light. And Mr. Spanu says in his letter to us that if we have any comments or suggestions, you know, he'd like to talk about it. So, I'm going to ask you to address that.
I had sort of the same reaction to, to the different articles that I saw, that it, frankly, the, it's overplayed, as far as I'm concerned, it's overstated as to what any public use would be. And I talked to Steve this afternoon, he called me to talk about that particular thing, and I reviewed the things. It is a warehouse, there is some display area in that, in there, there's no, no getting away from that, but it's large, by and large, a warehouse. The idea was that there would be occasionally people coming in and looking at the product or something like that. There was never an idea that there would be any kind of assembly space, and there is no intention to become an assembly space. It's, in light of some of that language, it's hard to present, to present it as cogently as I liked to, but it was, I would like to, but the fact is, it's for the house, a private collection, there will be some art space, or some display space. I looked at the code, and I think what we can do here, well, what we do, what's envisioned really is a student or, or a, come in to study the art or to research this kind of art, or some local residents maybe with an interest in it occasionally coming in and being allowed some private access. Now, Mr. Kuzmundo, who is the architect, pointed out to me a section in the code where you can have, you can have a research area. So, what we can, I think what we can do to cure this thing is set aside a small area that, that is strictly for research, a library area, and there's going to be libraries, and I think he mentioned in one of those things about books and a collection of books and stuff like that on, on the subject. So, if we, if we, if we had the warehouse and we set aside a small area, 300 or 400 square feet, where there was basically a classroom and a desk where research could be conducted in the library, I think we've cured the problem.
So, it's been in the press, you know, it's been mentioned as a place that will be open to the public by appointment.
Definitely will, will give you any kind of assurance that it will not be open to the general public, that's just not, not the case.
I would like to talk along with what he's saying. Miguel Kuzmundo, I'm the architect, I also work for the owners, Nancy and Giorgio Spanu. This is, it's not about putting a patch on this, I think it was always from the, from the start, it was clear, they wanted to host their collection and, and in a, in a generous way and display their, their collection. As you remember, we, we wanted to do that in, in their residence, and later on, this opportunity came up, and this is always been, the intention is, we never use the World Museum because it's not an open to public space, it's never intended to be like that. The building has not been designed to be an assembly space, with all the requirements that that would need in terms of egress and parking spaces and whatnot. And again, this is mostly their private collection, and they will obviously have, they have a relationship with the arts in general, and they may have people coming, and, and again, it's not an open doors, and they've always said that in public and in private, and that's the intent. So, I think Mr. Spanu sent that letter just to reassure our intentions, and to ask if there's anything in particular that we should implement to make you comfortable with the project, but it doesn't go farther than that. So, we were, I'm here to listen to any questions, and if possible, answer if, if I can. Thank you.
I just have a question. If it, if you set up a room, either as library or as an archival research, doesn't that make it a public space?
No, no. You have a library in a house, I mean, you could have a study in a house, and it would be, it would be made available to students of the arts, that would be, that would be an appropriate place for somebody to come, and it would be, but it wouldn't be public in the sense of an assembly. I can tell you, the biggest crowd that's ever going to be there is when the Historical Society wants to have their cocktail party there, and other similar organizations.
And all the egresses and all the emergency exits, everything will be code for that. Was that an A2, A3 assembly? No, it won't be.
No. So, we, so what I see here is, is a potential, you know, if that, if that kind of thing is going to happen, we have a potential Glenwood problem.
Correct.
No, I, I, you know, we're not going to have crowds there, but you know that when they have our local charitable organizations find places where they want to have their cocktail parties, and, you know...
And, and that's 100 people.
Yeah, no, it's 100 people, it's 100 people for a couple of hours in the afternoon, and it's done all the time, and it's not, and it's, it's, and it's, I doubt that any of them are in code compliant places.
But, it's our charter, you know, to make sure that the public is safe, right? So, you know...
Well, then we, we would certainly take a condition that we not be allowed to do that.
I mean, my, my question is really how many, you know, like, if you, you know, it's clear that there's going to be stuff going on, and it's clear that there will be people, so, you know, I, I'd just like to know how many people, because I feel like, you know, I've asked repeatedly, is this going to be a museum since this project was started, and I've always been given the answer, no, it's a warehouse. Do I think this is a great project? I think it's a great project, but I'm concerned that we follow the rules.
Yeah, and it's, I, I don't have an argument with that, I just, it's, I've always said from the beginning, it's not open to the pub, to the general public at all, it's not open to the public at all. I've always sort of joked about these cocktail parties because I know that's going to happen, but an occasional visitor who's going to do some research, want to see a particular piece, this is a very unique collection of, of art, that, that people are going to want to come in, they're going to want to see, and serious people are going to want to, want to see. And, and I'm not going to tell you that the Spanus aren't going to have guests for the weekend, that they come up and go through and look at the, look at the displays, you know?
No, that's not what we're worried about.
But, but, but we're not going to have, we're not going to invite the public generally for free or for a fee, so we're not going to man it that way, we're not going to staff it that way. As far as if, if doing something for one of the charity or charitable organizations in town is a problem for that kind of thing that happens all the time, we'll take a stipulation that that not be done.
I mean, I don't even like, I mean, I, I like to think of it a way to, to make it allowable. I'm not, I don't like to approach it about, well, how can we make sure they don't do that? That's, that's not my concern, but it, what they're doing, if they have the assembly there, is not legal. So, how do we make it legal? I mean, if, if we have to do a code, a code revision for this sort of thing, which I know happens, and you're right, it does happen, we have these fundraisers happening in non-assembly places, or places not designated, so how do we revise the code to allow, because I'm all for fundraisers? So, I don't want you to get the impression that we're trying, that I, you see what I'm...
I don't get it, you've got, you've got a dilemma here. I mean, you know, we've got a dilemma, if, if, we can't, we've got a dilemma here with regard to public assembly places, we're not going to have that, if, if, in terms of general thing, we, we're just not going to have it, and we, and, maybe I shouldn't have made the joke about the, about the charities, you know, maybe it was a technical mistake, tactical error.
No, I think it's a good use of the space, Glenn, I'm just saying that if, I think there's a, there's, I think there's an opportunity here for us to really just, you know, let's figure out how to enable you, to let you, things like this happen.
No, and I, I know it, but I don't think the applicant is willing to go into a major, I don't know how, what it is, but the architectural changes that would be required to make it into an assembly space, that's, that's, that's not in the, it's not in the budget.
That's not the direction I'm headed, I'm saying, I'm saying, let's, let's get something for X number of uses of non, what you would have to refer to as non-compliant, or non-conforming use.
That would take a zoning change, and you, from, from the point of view of zoning change, it would have to take, it would, it would take a change in the zoning code.
Right, but we have to go one way or the other. We have to either make that change, or we have to ask for the stipulation from you that it won't be used to that effect, so we can go one way or the other.
You know, I, I know what...
I think that's altogether true, Neil. I don't know that it is. They're not, excuse me, they're not seeking approval of a site plan to use the building to host cocktail parties or any gatherings beyond what's been identified as inviting, what is that? Students and scholars who may wish to study in depth. Now, that changes a little bit the use of the property, and I'm not using use in the, the code sense, I'm just saying what's going to go on there, from what we were told when they came in last time, because they said it was going to be a warehouse, they were going to put their objects of art in there, and, and that was really all you were told. And now you're seeing, well, yes, that's true, but they may invite people in, you don't know the numbers, to, you know, periodically view them, study them, do, do whatever it is they're going to do in terms of, you know, in terms of the artistic use of the, the pieces in there. Now, in the narrow legal sense, the use under the code is still a warehouse, but as a practical matter, it's a private museum. I mean, you can say legally, it's a warehouse, but I mean, it's set up as a museum, you can see the pictures from it, it, it may be for their private enjoyment, but as a practical matter, it's, it's a museum. Now, they've come back for amended site plan approval, and there are a number of things which you're going to be considering in regard to that, from modifying the driveway to demolishing the caretaker house, and security gate, and things like that. The addition of having more people than, than just the Olmec Spanous go to the property, I think opens up for site plan review, issues like parking, outside lighting, to a very, very minor extent, the interior, I, I don't know the extent to which there are emergency exits and things like that, it should be easy enough to provide a site plan, though, to make sure that there's not issues there. But I don't know that you need to go beyond that and say, well, gee, if they do have 100 people there for the Historic Society soiree or whatever it might be, we ought to be prepared for that. If it arises in the future, let code compliance deal with it in the future. Unless they're coming here telling you, this is what we're going to use it for, there's really no reason for the planning board to get into it at this time. Take a look at what's been represented to you as the, the proposed additional use, people by appointment only. I think it's fair game to ask them, well, how many people by appointment only? You going to have 100? You going to have two? You know, what's, what's, give us some parameters on this. And the same thing with the scholars and so forth, and then, once you have more information on that, you can adjust the site plan appropriately, but to go beyond that and say, well, gee, in the future you may want to, I, I don't know that you need to go there, and so wind up either saying, stipulate that you won't do it, or let's, let's make arrangements so that you can do it. Why don't you just deal with what's in front of you, and let the future take care of itself.
Tom, I want to ask a technical question. There are 31 parking spaces here. Is it similar to a restaurant that that's like three people per parking space?
You know, I'd have to look at how it would apply in the code.
Okay.
But I mean, if they're going to have more people, the scholars or students or just friends by, by invitation, you want there to be reasonable parking space, and it might be necessary to have some outdoor lighting, I don't know, depends on how long people are going to stay, but these are questions, you vet with them as the application goes forward.
Okay.
I have a simple question, just probably that Steve can answer, but the current application just continues to describe the use as warehouse storage of personal property. Are we saying that that, that application should be amended to describe something different?
I, I don't think that's necessary, and frankly, I don't, I don't know that it would, I don't know that it would matter in the end. As best I can tell, if this was going to be operated as a museum, then it would fall within the code's definition of institutional use. And it's true that institutional uses aren't permitted in the OC district. But, but, the, the code's provision as far as institutional uses is written in a, a very eccentric way, and, and it almost divides institutional uses of over 20 acres from all other institutional uses in such a way that it says, if you're an institutional use of less than 20 acres, this is going to sound a little bit out there, but as I read it, you aren't treated for zoning purposes as an institutional use, but rather as the nearest, well, the nearest use that you would be, whether you're a warehouse, you're a service business, or whatever it might be. I'll, I'll, I don't want to take up the board's time, but I'll read real quickly. Institutional use is defined as, "The use of at least 20 acres of land by a not-for-profit organization for educational, recreational, artistic, religious, spiritual, et cetera, et cetera." Uses included, but not limited to, summer camps, historic sites, religious retreat, monasteries, et cetera, et cetera. Period. Where such use occupies less than 20 acres of land, they shall be classified in the most appropriate way according to the use table. So, it looks like it's saying, if you're one of these uses, you qualify as an institutional use, and you're on 20 acres or more of land, then when you look at the use tables and you see institutional uses permitted or not permitted, that's what applies.
Yeah.
But, if you're less than 20 acres of land, and you cla, you would otherwise be what's described as an institutional use, you look at the nearest, the closest you can come up with type of use, and you see where that's permitted and under what conditions, and that's what applies. So, if you were to say, this use is most like a warehouse, it's permitted where warehouses are permitted and under those conditions. If you were to say, this is most like a central service, or a service business, excuse me, then you would go by that. It just so happens both those uses are permitted in the OC, subject to site plan, of course. So, at the end of the day, it's not going to matter whether you say this is a museum or this is a warehouse, I think for zoning purposes, it's going to be permitted in this district. Now, you know, the ZBA may disagree with that, but that's my reading of the code.
Well, the, the point of the 20 acres was to encourage, you know, institutions to keep those large parcels together, and so to give them certain benefits in order to encourage them to not break it up, because as institutions age, sometimes they need funds, and there's an incentive to break it up, so...
I think that's half of the coin, I think the other side of the coin is if you have an institution on that large of, of a piece of property, you can, and it isn't always true, of course, but you can fairly assume that it's going to become, it's going to use the land, it's going to be a large institutional use. Large institutional uses are appropriate in some districts, they are not appropriate in other districts, in this case, the towns determine the OC is one of those. But, if you have something that qualifies as it, but it's on a smaller piece of property, it's probably not going to be as intensive a use of a very small museum.
It qualifies as an institutional use, because it's not, it's not a nonprofit.
I'm not either.
I mean, not as an institution, because it's not a nonprofit, it's completely private.
But I'm not sure it's a warehouse either. I mean, I think technically it falls within the, the code's definition, but I'm not sure that's what they're really using for. But my point is this, at the end of the day, from a zoning perspective, a use permitted or not, it, it just isn't going to matter here. The issue here is, are they making enough of a change to what was represented before that you should expand your review of the site plan beyond just what's been listed as the changes they're making, and say, you know, if you're going to be permitting additional people in there, there's a couple of things that we should look at in addition, and I listed parking, for example, as one of them. And I listed parking, for example, as one of them. And I don't know, I don't suppose that traffic is going to be a big issue here. It doesn't sound like they have a lot of people coming in. But if they say, we're going to invite, you know, 250 students from, you know, various colleges to come in all at one time, then you may have to look at it. But I mean, that aside, the issue is, are there a few additional things that you should look at besides what's being... I think the answer is yes.
Well, even in terms of processing the application, should the board be describing this as, again, warehouse use for personal property? Or they specifically talk about it being exhibition space with a library?
I think if the applicant wants to describe it as a warehouse, unless there's some particular reason to make them change it, and I don't see any, I would just process it as warehouse, but with the understanding, it's a warehouse that's going to be used in this manner. And that can be written into the site plan approval.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Sure, you have to state your name and...
My name is Lithgow Osborne. I'm a resident of Garrison. I'm assuming that this...
Excuse me, just turn it off. Did I just turn it off?
You broke it.
No, there's got the little button there.
I'm assuming that it has fire suppression capabilities?
It's the architecture.
Yes, it does.
Okay. So, I have been to the site. I have been to the site. And there are, as far as I can tell, if there were to ever be anything danger, there are so many opportunities to exit that building, that that doesn't seem like a real concern to me. But if, if it's a question of making it safer, then, you know, that might be the suggestion, not, because I think this is a huge, wonderful opportunity. I mean, it's an important collection, and there are a number of curators, collectors, scholars who are interested specifically in having access to this. It's a huge feather in our cap. It's a very important project. So, I would urge, and, you know, and I know that the board is working with the Spanos to, to make sure that everything is absolutely 100 percent perfect. So, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Just, sorry, just along that side, the building, as we committed, it's a fully sprinkler building, and it, well, the inspector, the building inspector is also the fire marshal. He's been there a few times, and we're definitely working with him to comply with every requirement. And we're obviously very careful with, in particular, the life safety of the occupants.
Okay. So, what we'll do is, we'll ask those questions about how many people, and as Steve suggested that we could...
It would be helpful if the applicant would submit something in writing as far as what their intentions are, just clear everything up, rather than kicking the can down the road. But that's up to them. They can either hand it in now, or you can ask them, you know, as you move forward.
We'll submit some additional material. No problem.
Good. Okay. So, now that we've done...
What you want to do is just acknowledge that it should be classified as a major project pursuant to your site plan regulation.
I'm ready to look at the rest of the stuff that was submitted. This was just the beginning.
Okay.
Okay. So, Glenn, you're going to give us some more information. Now, we do have, you know, these documents that were submitted to us about the changes, and I, Ron, if you want to talk about this, and then we'll ask some questions.
Yeah, as I said, the project should be deemed as a major project pursuant to the town's site plan regulations, and you should so classify it tonight. With respect to completeness of the application, since it represents a major project, the applicant should be directed to file a long form EAF. They currently have filed a short form, but again, being a major project, a long form is required. There's a variety of referrals that are appropriate, Putnam County Planning for 239M, DOT, DEC, and again, the Conservation Board, because there will be wetlands applications to be processed. And we have technical issues which the applicant consultant can easily respond to.
So, I have a couple of questions. On the, the little table here, our footprint is nearly doubling. So, I just want to know what's changing that's, you know, because it's going from 10,798 square feet to 19,473 square feet. So, I'm just wondering where that change is occurring, like what's getting built that we didn't see before?
This, that's really basically the same as it was before, except for the replacement of this building, which is going to make it. So, why don't I just go through the site plan?
Sure.
All right. So, there have been some changes that have happened during the course of construction. They figured something else out that wasn't thought about, they took care of it. As originally approved, we started off with this L-shaped building here, which is the original building, long L-shaped building. And your previous approval called for a, this second building, and that essentially takes care of all of the increase in square footage from what previously existed. So, I guess we, we might have updated that to show it, because we had the building on the ground, and that just wasn't done. What's new to this thing is the, is the parking is being realigned, basically to give a more geometric pattern to, a regular geometric pattern to the site. That involves squaring off the parking area, a retaining wall that was partially built. There is a, this building we talked to you about before, which is that shed, for lack of a better word. And we want, we want to realign the entrance. We want to come in from Route 9 much more directly, more right angles, which is the standard that the DOT is looking for. We want to rebuild those retaining walls, which really need to replace, be replaced. That involves replacing the drainage under the, under the driveway, and basically making this entry compliant with state DOT requirements. It's essentially in the same location, just adjusted, and then it comes in and bends a little and goes, and approaches the parking lot in a rectangular fashion. There's a glass hallway that connects these two buildings. There was this area, this small postage stamp-sized area was originally supposed to be paved. It has a pool in it, so there was, it was an aesthetic reason for that. And the buildings are connected with a hallway right from here, from this place to this place. So, the building is essentially unchanged. There are a couple, those couple of minor changes that I talked about. The caretaker's cottage, we want to take that down and build a new one up here. We'll use the same septic system. So, you have a little bit of increase in square footage there. Other than that, the, some of the, we've updated the survey to show that a lot of the landscaping that's been installed, so you have an idea of what's actually there. There's been a lot of planting here, there's been a lot of planting over here, and you've seen it, I think you commented, you commented about it at the last, last time we talked about this. But, it's not going to look very different. Do we have the sign on here? I think we have, calling for a sign on here. No, no sign? Okay. I apologize, this was done while I was away, so. That's, those are the changes, just not very many. Take this house down, put a new house here, realign the parking, the parking in this area, realign the access, fix up the drainage, and the...
So, the major part of the disturbance, because it's like, what is it, nine, like nearly 9,000 square feet of disturbance, is really just digging up the parking lot?
Well, there's the disturbance in here, which requires a wetlands permit. There'll be disturbance to construct this, there'll be disturbance to take this, this down.
Okay.
That's the major part of it. This site, all that disturbance was identified in the original site plan.
How big is, how much bigger is the new house than the old house? What's the square footage?
I don't know if that's actually designed yet.
As of now, we were thinking to get a prefabricated house. The existing one is in decay, and it has mold, and, and we thought it was better to just build a new one. And I think it may be 1,800 square feet at the most, with the U shape. But that was one, it was a three-bedroom, equivalent to the three-bedroom that is there. Probably will be smaller, but we decided to do larger in case.
And the adjusted lines for the parking were at, what, 30, 31 spaces, they said?
I think it's 34.
34.
From, 27, I believe, we had originally?
I don't remember what we had before.
There's plenty of parking, though. I mean, it's way more than we need.
That's what concerns me. Yeah.
So, any questions, any other questions from the board?
Well, it just seems to me that the use of the structure still hasn't been clarified at all. And Ron has lots of questions here as well, but how can we put...
We'll give you written responses to that.
Yeah, I mean, all the things that Steve brought up, it's like, at this point, it's like putting the cart before the horse, you know, unless we know, and if you talk about a 400-square-foot archive library, you're talking about two people at the most doing some type of work there.
Really not talking about any major population.
But you have 27 parking spaces, with a lot of...
Now, that parking, the truth is, the parking's all been there forever, yeah.
It's, you know, fairly anyways.
Parking was driven by the square footage of the structure, and the, your question on the square footage that's showing on these latest plans, they just haven't been updated for the prior approvals. That goes back to the original approval of the construction of the one add-on building. So, that currently, the 19,000-square-foot building is in place.
Okay.
So, I guess if you could file a narrative to clarify those things.
I will file a narrative. We can, what we'll do is, with this chart, we'll put in, we'll put them original interim proposed, so that, so that you could see that progression, so we can compare it with what was, was under construction now.
David, anything? No? All right. So, the next step then would be to deem this a major project. So, I'll take a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
David, second.
Second.
Peter, second. Peter, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll direct the applicant to file a long form EAF, take a motion to that.
Don't.
Neil, second.
Second.
Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, can I just do the referrals as a blanket thing, instead of separate motions, or...
Yeah, sure. DOT, DEC, CAC, I think all three of them are going to need a long form EAF.
Right. We need to get the long form from the applicant.
And then, there's the 239M, which you also have to do, and that's the same thing as the last application that we had, that referrals got to be conditional upon getting the long form EAF, because otherwise, you haven't satisfied your obligation.
Do I declare as lead agency? Is this a coordinated review?
Well, see, it's not a type one action, right? It's an unlisted action.
No, it's unlisted, right.
So, you have an option. You can either do a coordinated review, in which case, you got a, instead of circulating, instead of not circulating anything, just declaring yourself lead agency, you circulate a notice of intent to be lead agency, then DOT, DEC, and I suppose CAC, I'm not, I don't think that they're a permanent agency, but DOT and DEC would be bound by your secret declaration. To make it an unlisted action, when it goes to DOT and DEC, they'll have to adopt their own separate negative declarations, which isn't that big a deal, there's theoretically potential for, you know, conflicting secret decisions. It's not going to happen here. So, I mean, you know...
So, you recommend that we don't have a coordinated review?
It's up to you. It's just not that big a deal. I mean, if you do, the difference is this, you're going to send out a document called a notice of intent to be lead agency, and it'll go to DEC, and DOT, and probably CAC as well. And then, you got to wait 30 days. They have an opportunity to object. And if they don't object, then, hey, presto, you're lead agency, and you can take action under SECPRA, okay? But you're not, I don't think you're going to be ready to act on this in 30 days, anyway, so...
No, no, and to keep this simple, prior application of the original one, the site plan approval granted in 2014, you did conduct a coordinated review, so it's a simple matter to get that done one more time. And then, it deals, it ties up all agencies to allow you to make one decision covering the environmental review.
Okay. Sorry.
So, Ron recommends that you do a coordinated review.
Absolutely, it's simple. It'll go right out.
He wants to send out the notice, and...
Well, no, it just, it deals with all agencies at once. It's a simple matter.
It's fine.
Okay. So, this, I'm sorry, this is where my brain fits. So, we're lead agency, and we're doing a coordinated review?
Yes, you know, declare your intent.
In 30 days after the notice goes out, if nobody complains...
Yeah, we usually do this coordinated review.
Yeah, you're going to declare your intent to be lead agency tonight.
There's very few where you actually have to coordinate, so you wind up usually just declaring yourself to be lead agency, because you're the only involved agency.
Okay. So, what's the statement I'm going to make here?
Declaring your intent to become lead agency and issuing a circulation package to other involved agencies.
For a coordinated review?
Yep.
Okay. So, like a motion to declare us as lead agency and circulate a packet to other agencies for a coordinated review?
All right, that's close, but it's not, you're declaring your notice of that you're intended to be lead agency.
Intended to be lead agency.
And then, the notice will be circulated, and in 30 days, you will be.
Do I have to say it again?
No, you close it.
Okay.
I'll make that, we'll get that right in a minute.
David will make that motion, Peter seconding it, and we'll, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, that takes care of the referrals, and then, the technical issues will be resolved with Ron.
Yep, right.
And is that all we have to do for this for tonight?
And you want to talk about the possibility of a site walk?
Oh.
If you feel one's necessary.
So, what do we think? Do you think we need a site visit?
You're already getting together on the 6th.
Right. It's not too much further down the road.
It's not on the road.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Double up.
Yeah, so, like, we'll go there at 10:30, 10:15? What do you think, Ron? How long will it take us at Griffin?
It'll be long.
Ron can't hear me. Ron, how long do you think it'll take us at Griffin? Should be 10:15?
Yeah, 10:15 will be plenty, right.
Okay. So, 10:15 on the 6th of November, we will have a site visit. I don't have to take, make a motion for that. No. Okay. So, that, I think, is that.
Church.
Thanks for coming, everybody. I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Neil, second?
Second.
Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. Thanks, Cecilia. Thanks, Kim.